Now, yeah, James has a new text.
Zoom is live?
I don't always get sound by you.
Yeah, lucky you.
I was thinking the other way around to get there before me.
Have a late night.
Late night, really morning.
All that together.
Waiting for the host to start the meeting. Heading on Zoom, the city of Salina planning commission meeting. Meeting ID 82421695729. We're emailing you. Let me read that back to you. Okay, all right. Commissioners, Mayor Davis is zooming in and we were just coordinating the meeting number to get him in the right Zoom meeting. So he should be joining us momentarily. I have a flag to pledge to. Let me put it on the screen. Okay, Mayor Davis, can you hear us? It looks like you're muted, Mayor.
All right, how's that?
There we go. That's good on our end.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for the proper number there.
No problem.
Is the mayor okay in here?
Yeah, no problem at all.
You're larger than life.
So this is kind of an impromptu special meeting that was called and I'll get into that explanation a little bit. I thank the commissioners for your flexibility. We traded texts trying to coordinate this, but what we didn't coordinate is the mayor being on Zoom once again and the possibility of Vice Mayor Ryan chairing the meeting. I'll defer to the two of you, but it seemed to work well yesterday. Yesterday, no, day before yesterday.
Dr. Davis, if you'd like to preside, you certainly may, but I, it worked well on Monday. I can go ahead and... On Monday was so smooth, I'm just gonna sit here and keep my microphone muted. I am in a large convention center, so I'll keep it muted unless I have something to say. Well, then I'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting, 1:00 PM on August the 3rd. And I guess I should ask staff if we have sent the necessary confirmations out to comply with the Kansas open meeting.
Yes.
And then we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Lincolnwood?
Here.
Commissioner Longbaum?
Here.
Um, would we really like to have a...
Well, that's kind of on there as a form. If you want to dispense with that, I think that'd be appropriate since we don't have the flag in the room.
Then we're on the, let's move on and we'll go ahead with the administrative meeting.
All right, thank you. We prepared a PowerPoint, finished it up about 45 minutes ago. And I think it's a pretty good overview of what we've got going on. So we'll start there. Feel free to stop and interrupt with questions. I do want to make some acknowledgements. This relates to what we're referring to as a RACE grant. That stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Discretionary Grant Program. As you may recall, you previously authorized submission of that grant. And a lot of people other than me were instrumental in getting that application together. Martha Tasker, Jacob Wood, and Kylie Guion, who I don't know if you've met, she, we talk about having a grant fellow. She's the fellow that does a lot of our grant coordination. And we're kind of keeping a running tally of our successes so far. And I think we're at about 20 million. And this particular grant, we're talking about another 20 million. So this, while it calls for a need for a special meeting and it seems a little dicey, this is an exciting opportunity. We, you know, things look at least promising that we're getting feedback about our application and wanting clarification. And the clarification that's needed includes some changes that we felt like required the governing bodies authorization beyond the authority of what staff could respond. So this meeting was necessitated by a 24-hour response deadline that was imposed on us by the RACE grant administrators yesterday morning. So they wanted us to respond by 5:00 PM Eastern, which is 4:00 PM our time. And so we've been scrambling to try to kind of assess the question and the answers and prepare this presentation for you. So this is a little bit more of a broad overview of the river project as a whole. I know some of you've had questions about that all along. And I think it's necessary to give you that background as we get into the rest of this conversation. So, you know, we've talked about available city funds for the river project before. When we take into account cash on hand, and by that I mean the 2016 sales tax proceeds that have been collected. That's a call I've been waiting for from Senator Moran's office all morning. Couldn't be more awkward. So, cash on hand, we've been collecting proceeds from the sales tax election since 2016. Some of that's been spent on design fees and other things up to this point. And there is some cash in reserve. Then we've also talked with you previously about if we took the $1.3 million a year that was committed, and that's per that Salina citizen marketing piece, and financed it for the remainder of the sales tax life, which is through 2036, then we could debt finance a particular amount. And then we set aside a half a million dollars of ARPA funds. When you put all that together, our most recent estimate of the value of that is $14,837,000. So that's kind of the known dollar amount that we have available to put towards the river project elements that are still ahead of us. So as we work our way through what has to happen, first and foremost, we have to acquire water rights. And that cost is $960,000. So then you may recall that we've been talking about the Army Corps of Engineers funding, and they call it the CAP program, the Continuing Authorities Program. We've been talking about that for quite a bit. I would describe it as there's good communication and collaboration that's going on. They've been working on preliminary cost estimates. The program goals for that project are essentially reparations for the impacts of the 1960 bypass project that rerouted the river around the community. And back then and to this day, we're thankful that it's rerouted. So to call it reparation seems a little, you know, inflammatory maybe, but the Corps looks at it as avoided flooding, but it created other environmental impacts. And so the other thing that they look at is environmental lift. And that's a term that they use, but they're looking for the, how the project will improve the environmental aspects of the river. And that's a very definite design consideration that our designers have had to take into account. And then the Corps staff reviews as they look at a proposed project. So the project elements for the CAP design are what we're calling entrance works or water control gates at the river, flow control, dredging, as well as disposal of the sediment. So, you know, you may recall there is a significant portion of placement of the dredge, the sediment at Lakewood and turning it into a wetland. And there's some regulatory aspects that go with that. Channel shaping, you may recall that not only just the route of the channel, but we talked about depth and having eddies and pools and trying to make it more advantageous for the environment, bank stabilization, and then addressing the mill dam on Iron Street. So I'll stop there. Martha, anything to add as it relates to the key elements of the CAP design?
No, I think that covers what they intend to do.
Okay, so that's been in the works for a while in terms of design. The preliminary estimate that we've been working from for quite some time, us and our designers and the Corps of Engineers, was $14,790,000, with the Corps essentially putting in 10 million. They've got some design fees that round that 9.5 up to 10, and the city putting in 5.2. Then outside of the CAP program, we knew that there were other, what we're calling required elements to get the functioning of the river kind of minimally where it needs to be. That was a North Ohio pedestrian underpass, South Ohio bridge or culvert to expand that so it can accommodate the flow, and then the typical project costs of mobilization, design, and contingency. Then on top of that, we were looking at additional Phase 1 elements to add to the aesthetics and some of the other elements. So the Fourth Street Plaza was a key element, additional bridges at Iron Street, Ash Street, Elm Street, trash best management practices, some trails in Phase 1 in that scale. It varies depending on available funding and again mobilization, design, and contingency. So when you take all that into account and you kind of recalculate what that means for a balance, we have the water rights cost, the CAP estimate, and those elements that I just described totals $17,702, and that is a projected shortfall of essentially $2.8 million in that scenario. So moving on, the RACE grant, which you authorized submission April 7th of this year, has a couple of key dates. There's a mandatory obligation date of September 30th of 2026. And then there's a mandatory funding expiration of September 30th of 2031. So those are out there just a little bit. But the application is underway and as I've said before, we're on a 24-hour deadline at the moment. So the required city elements that we previously discussed that were in that RACE grant proposal were the North Ohio pedestrian underpass and the South Ohio bridge. The required element, the required Phase 1 element, I shouldn't say required. The Phase 1 elements that we included in the RACE were the Fourth Street Plaza, Iron Street, Ash Street, Elm Street, and Trails. And it's noteworthy that the Fourth Street Plaza proposal in the RACE grant was 4.8 million compared to 1.9 million estimated as part of our other approach. And similarly, Trails were estimated at $5 million compared to 3/4 of a million dollars. So we're able to beef those up. Then additionally, we were able to add other elements. Lakewood Park Bridge, the Midway Bridge, YMCA Bridge, lighting for the trail system, pedestrian crossing safety elements, which is a key criteria for RACE, multimodal hub, which is also a key criteria for RACE, and that's basically an electric car charging station, retaining wall work at Fourth Street and the water plant, which is currently very aged, channel maintenance facility and some boat ramps to access the channel, a Fourth Street boardwalk in addition to the Fourth Street Plaza improvements, and then a levee outlet on the north end of the system. So number of additional elements above and beyond what we're looking at is our Phase 1. The total cost for that is essentially $36.7 million. Our request was the federal government put in just short of 25 million, which is the maximum mask, I understand. So 24,994 when the maximum is 25 million. Friends of the River gave us a written pledge that we were able to attach to the application indicating their willingness to raise $3,405,000. And that left the city contributing $8,270,000. So once again, if you kind of do that cost accounting in that scenario, we have the water rights still. We have the city CAP contribution. We have the city RACE contribution. That's a total of $14,470,000. And essentially, we're balanced, but leave a $367,000 surplus. So at the time that we submitted the RACE grant, we're, you know, a lot more buying power within our purchasing power, I guess, within our budget, I guess. So now we've had some recent developments. In the CAP program, the Corps staff came and made a presentation to you in November of last year. And then there was a public meeting in December of last year. And all that conversation was still based on the original CAP estimates. They advised us at that time that the CAP program funding was on hold. Their authority to enter into project partnership agreements was on hold. And all of that remains on hold to this date. However, we're continuing to have conversations with them and they're continuing to finalize their cost estimates. And we had a conference call with them two weeks ago now, very collaborative, very supportive of our project, trying to brainstorm with us some of the possible solutions to the challenges that we face that I'll get to in a minute. So next week, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Northwest Division Commander Colonel Jeff Van Eppes out of Portland is going to be in Salina. They've got a whole travel itinerary put together, look at flooding in other locations and look at our project. And that'll be an opportunity to, for him to see the project. I don't know how much deliberation or collaboration there might be, but it's an opportunity for us to obviously sell our project, but then also talk about possible options. So the issue at hand is they have cost estimating protocols depending on where they're at in their design stage. First and foremost, they have contingency of 35% to 50%, depending on where they're at in the design. Currently, they're including a 50% contingency. They have a national cost index that they developed based on other projects. And they have a regional cost index that is more directed at kind of the Midwest. Their national estimate with a 50% contingency went from that 14 million number to 23.7 million. And their regional estimate went to 28.5 million. They indicated in conversation, they think the regional number is probably more accurate. They did acknowledge that they need to get the design refined and get the contingency number down. So the conversation we've been having with them is kind of twofold. Number one, that cost increase is obviously significant. But then additionally, there's a $10 million program limit for the CAPS program, 10 million of federal funds. And then on top of that, we must have a complete project to receive any funding. So if we said, okay, we'll just pare this back and get it under budget, we won't have the environmental lift that they expect, we won't be viewed as a complete project, and we essentially won't get out of the gates in the CAP program. They also shared with us that they have predetermined allowable percentages that a project can exceed the 10 million. And based on that percentage, varying levels of authority that can approve it. So a 25% exceedance can be approved at the district commander level, 50% at headquarters, and 100% would be the Assistant Secretary of the Army. And they were quick to say, we might have seen that two or three times in our career. I wouldn't count on that. So they were pretty forthright, saying it's unlikely that the project will be CAP eligible based on the current cost estimates. We did talk about, you know, do we have any opportunities to pursue lobbying, special exceptions? They gave me the same answer I give, you know, when I'm on their side of the table, the precedent that it would set and longstanding policy. I do, you know, I did make the point that, you know, I think you could carve out, we are a project that's been in the works for five years, pre-COVID, pre-inflation. We are in a, and they acknowledged, we're in a fairly unique situation given kind of where we're at at the moment. But that would certainly require lobbying on our congressional delegation's part. I would say Senator Moran's office has been very involved. They've been supportive of the RACE grant application. They've been staying plugged in with the status of the CAPS program. We were trying to make arrangements for Senator Moran to join the Colonel on his tour, but that's two high-ranking officials conflicting schedules. I'm not sure we're going to get that straightened out. But at a minimum, I'd like to have some of Moran's staff in attendance. And so the call that I just handed off was their staff. We've been in contact with them since this recent development with the RACE grant and trying to see if they had any ability to get some insight for us, how, what our grant application looks like from a scoring standpoint, if we made some changes, what that might do, any insight they might be able to provide. So the other thing that they brought up as we talked about the CAP program is we could transition to the general investigation program. It does not have a dollar limit. They acknowledged that, you know, in hindsight, I wish we would have done that, but we thought we, the CAP program is much more expedient and thought that was the way to go. The GI program is intended to help communities solve a water resource problem. It requires congressional action, which is, you know, the level of bureaucracy they were trying to avoid. But it has a lot more funding available if you can get the congressional allocation. And one of the things that they said is transitioning from the CAP program to the GI program could likely delay us two years. They're speculating a little bit whether it could get, whether it was too late to get into the 2023 legislative session. And it kind of depended on possibly our congressional delegation's ability to have some influence. So meanwhile, they agreed to continue to finalize the CAP program estimates. They're really close to having that done. That should help refine that number possibly. There are different requirements in terms of design and cost estimating, but they seem to think that we might be able to roll the design and estimates over to the GI program or at least use them as a starting point, which might expedite the preparation of cost estimates in the GI program. As I noted, it requires congressional approval and could represent a two-year delay. Recognizing the sense of urgency on everyone's part to get something going on the river, if we pursued the GI program, that we might be able to do some RACE improvements. We might be able to do some improvements funded by us or others. So the entire project might not be on a two-year hold or two-year delay, but it certainly would take some coordination so that we're not being imprudent in whatever work we might pursue. And then I've mentioned already, keeping Senator Moran's office informed. So then yesterday, this email came in. This is the email in its entirety but for their email address. The takeaway is, number one, don't get your hopes up. This is not any indication that your application has been selected. But they are then asking whether we have any additional sources of federal or non-federal funding in the amount of $4.8 million. If we do, they would like us to provide a detailed breakdown or consider a reduced scope, again, providing a level of detail. And essentially, they would take their federal funding to 20.1 million, which is 24.8 million, or 4.8 million less, and looking for us to close that gap somehow. And then they need an answer essentially by 4:00 today. They did acknowledge, if we're practical, they might accept a late response, but we didn't want to take that chance. So in light of all that, then, we started looking at what, strategically, what should we be thinking about? HDR is our design consultant. Martha's worked with them extensively. They and Kylie and Jacob helped put the application together to get us to the point we are at the moment, which I feel like we're very competitive. They, HDR's feedback was Trails, lighting, pedestrian safety, and bridges are priorities in their eyes that help your application's scoring. They advised against, and there's a typo, reducing the scope. They suggested removal of the maintenance building and boat ramps. They suggested possibly reducing the contingency from 20%. And they suggested removal of the Fourth Street Plaza. However, and I don't want to speak for Friends of the River, but I think the concept all along has been Friends of the River's contribution was going to be directed at the Fourth Street Plaza. So trying not to make that trade-off if we don't have to. So some things that we initially identified to staff last night were the Fourth Street Plaza taking it down to the value of the Friends of the River contribution. So at that point, it was initially 4.87. There was $3,405,000 pledged by Friends of the River. And then the total budget was a little bit more than that. And I don't know the right time to put Friends of the River on the spot. Maybe now's as good as any. We've, Friends of the River became aware of the email. We've had conversations off and on yesterday and this morning. And so they've had a chance to deliberate in light of all this. And I'll give someone on behalf of Friends of the River the opportunity. Um, yes, please.
Thank you. We were able to deliberate. It was, and there was a lot of discussion about possibly increasing our pledge. I think you are correct, Mike, in the assumption that, I think it's been, the idea all along has been that the plaza would be one of the primary pieces that we could fundraise for just because it's so visible and there'd be a lot of opportunities most likely for naming and things like that. So we've always felt like that is an important part for us in terms of our ability to fundraise that amount. And if now is the appropriate time, I can share that we, the board, like I said, there was a lot of discussion. As Mike mentioned, the original, the original pledge was $3,405,000. And we felt like increasing that to $4,025,000 is doable. We will, we do have to acknowledge that we feel like we're getting to the top of our abilities to fundraise. And probably perhaps the most important part, and I know that this project has evolved over the years, and so this isn't meant as a criticism, but more just as an, as a observation and acknowledgement, is that we feel like our ability to fundraise that amount is going to be heavily dependent on seeing some, the public and donors seeing some actual physical progress. So again, I don't mean that as a criticism. It's been a long road and the Corps has been involved and the Corps has definitely been challenging. But I just think as we talked, that was definitely a concern for people was to be able to show some things. And I know we've got that trail potentially from Ohio around the Y, which would certainly be a good first step for people to see what it will look like and have something that they could use, so.
I, thank you for the quick turnaround and the funding increase. And I think that's totally fair in terms of characterization and the expectations. We're aware of it as well. You know, we, part of that public conversation we had was, do we take the extra time in hopes of landing additional Corps money or do we just go ahead on our own?
Yeah, I saw that. I mean, it's later on in your presentation, so I know, I'm sure it's still going to come up, but yeah.
So I'll stop there in case the commissioner has anything they want to ask or say.
Because I noticed you said with the GI program, you know, work could commence. Was part of the reason we had not commenced work on part of the river was due to, was it the RACE or the CAP program that you couldn't do certain work or would hinder?
In the CAP program, until you have your agreement with the Corps, any work you do does not count as matching funds. And obviously, we were planning on 5.24 million and whatever we were spending, we wanted to allocate towards those matching funds, so.
But the scope of that CAP program is pretty limited. And there's other work that we're not looking to the CAP program to find.
The RACE grant is totally separate. The RACE grant, it looks like it might take us six or seven months to negotiate and get all of the, our ducks in a row and all of the pieces and get our costs finalized and so on. And then it has some dates as to when you need to have your, by September of 2026, we need to know what we're spending our money on, and by 2031. So I want you to realize the RACE program is not a yearly project. It's going to take a while. By 2031, then we'll have expended all of our funds here. So it's got a long stretch of time.
So the other thing I would tell you is the original application that we submitted included a letter from Friends of the River acknowledging their pledge in that original amount. So to me, that's encouraging that the RACE grant administrators didn't balk at it being a pledge rather than cash on hand. So I think Friends of the River's willingness to increase their pledge amount will be viewed by them as additional funding in response to their email from yesterday. So I, to me, that's huge and it's a great step forward. I kind of touched on it already, but HDR, our consultants, who we're kind of looking at as having experience and expertise with RACE grants in particular, has advised that, you know, the most competitive response is to increase the funding in the grant application. And, you know, there's no question of whether, what that does to our application versus making some cost or scope reductions. However, we did, as we refined these, kind of followed up with them, well, what do you think about these categories?
And they obviously said, don't cut anything that has to do with what the Department of Transportation likes. And Mike's covered that. And I ran this list by them that we talked about earlier about cutting the contingency. Originally, they were thinking, just tell them the contingency dropped to 10% because they thought maybe we had fluff in our contingency.
Which is a little ironic when the federal government uses 35 to 50.
Other leg of it uses that, but that was the concept there. So reviewed that and they didn't see that, they couldn't, they can't tell you. They're still working through their, talking to their national people in HDR. They're not just local to Kansas City or Omaha. And seeing if they have any, know any more insight about this. But their first blush thought was, well, they're telling you, you're going to get 20.1. But that's what they say they're telling you, but at the same token, they, I don't know if I'm going farther than that.
No, go ahead.
But he'll tell me, he'll kick me if I'm getting past where I'm supposed to go. But in their opinion, you would just tell them, yes, we can move forward. And the dollars are going to change over time, over this next six or seven months. And they think the... And they think the contingency's high, but in today's market, people are a little nervous. And that the dollars on these projects do move around. Because when we prepared these estimates, and Kylie and I are working with them on a daily basis, they didn't have a lot of time. We were doing this in the last week or so before we submitted the application. In fact, right before we presented it to the city commission. So everything in this project had to happen very quickly. And so we did our best guess at estimating things and trying to decide how much do we increase them? Because in April, we knew prices were a little different than we might have had two years ago. So in their opinion, they think the contingency will help us, and as we move forward with the project, some of the costs will change too. But they can't promise that, so.
Yeah, that, that may be an opportunity.
Right, an outside opportunity, yes.
So Rick Welch is our deputy finance director. He took that call for me. I'm going to put him on the spot a little bit. Any insight?
She basically said that it's a very positive indication of this email.
Can you use a microphone? I'm sorry. Come up here.
Oh, you can take that seat for that matter.
This was the, one of the senator's assistants, Lauren. She said it was a very positive indication that you received this email. She would highly suggest responding, yes, we can absorb it, and we can follow up subsequently with details. She has seen this a couple of times, and both times, it was positive for the city. And then she also mentioned, at the end of, towards the end of the projects, we can also ask if there's anything remaining and ask for any additional money to cover what we paid extra. So there's a possibility at the end to recoup some of our funds.
Okay. Late breaking news. You heard along with, with the rest of us. All right, so moving on. In light of all of that, we tried, if I'm thinking of the, there we go. We start, we ran scenarios last night and this morning. So the worst-case scenario that, that we identified was cap continues at the 28.5 million number with the city putting in 8.9 million. Raise, we put in the additional 4.8 million. And that assumed all city funds, didn't, didn't factor in the Friends of the River's increase, but.
Is that 18.9? You said 8.9?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, 18.9, yeah.
Just for anybody watching or listening.
Thank you, 18.9. So that generates a calculated shortfall of 18.13 million. That is the broader scope of the raise projects, but that is, as near as we can tell, that's the worst-case scenario. Kind of in numeric order here, the next scenario would be that we increase the raise contribution, and Martha and I did a hybrid calculation of cap, basically taking the contingency down to 35% and splitting the difference between the national and the regional indexes. That resulted in a project total of 23.5 million and a city contribution of 13.9. Core estimates would still have to be finalized. It describes those, the assumptions there, and that is a shortfall of 13.13 million. And as I noted earlier, not sure that that even ultimately fits into the cap program. But for the sake of math and, and what estimates we had, we thought we should calculate that. The next scenario we came up with was, you reduce the scope of the, the raise grant by 4.8 million, and you do the hybrid cap, and you're at a shortfall of 8.33 million. The next scenario was, we increased the raise contribution by the requested 4.8, and we roll over to the GI program. And these are very preliminary numbers based on some conversations that we've been able to have with them as we were talking about the cap program. But assuming that the city has a $9 million contribution in the GI program, that put us at a shortfall of 8.19 million. The numbers are going down. So then the next scenario was a reduced scope on the raise grant in the GI program with a shortfall of 3.39. The, probably what, well, so another scenario was, we increase the contribution to raise, and we don't go through a core program at all. And once again, we had to come up with some rough cost estimates in a short amount of time. But we're assuming 7.5 million full city expense for those elements that we were trying to accomplish in the cap program. So if we do that, there's a shortfall of 6.69 million. And then, I think this is the last scenario, reducing the scope of the raise grant and going in on our own without going through a core cap or GI program with a shortfall of 1.89 million. So the, we started, we also tried to inventory available sources of funds, increase Friends of the River pledge, which you just heard about. Sales tax proceeds in excess of the 1.3 million per year. The projected sales tax fund surplus through 2036 is in the range of 5 million to 7 million at this point. Things have turned for the better with the economy recently. That assumes an annual growth rate of a half a percent. And I think that was growing from 20, 20, 2019 numbers? It's not, it doesn't include the most recent growth that we've seen. You could reallocate the sales tax fund proceeds. We've talked about that at great length in terms of the different categories. We'll review for you the ARPA proceeds, and you could reallocate those. And then there's general fund reserve. We have a target balance of 10 million. At 2021, we had a balance of 18.5 million. Again, that, that's kind of a one-time experience that, that we were coming out of COVID and everything we did related to COVID. So moving on, with respect to the general fund reserve notes, we previously, as part of our strategic planning, said we wanted to increase the general fund balance by 1.5 million. So that's now where the 10 million target comes from. We said we want to do agenda management software, small ticket item, and it's underway. Website underway, time and attendance being implemented and underway. Temporary grant coordinator, coordinators in the room with us. Pay plan implementation, we just rolled that out with city employees. We, we think we were able to get that within the 2022 and 2023 budget, but we set aside $1 million just to hold in reserve in case there is any performance issues that, that challenge our budget. Facility audit is underway, and then replenishing the economic development fund with $750,000. So if you could back up one second, most of those things are happening in 2022. The, the fund balance is accounted for in the 10 million, but software, website, time and attendance, grant coordinator, pay plan, facility audit, and economic development fund are all expenditures in 2022 that would, would impact that general fund reserve balance, assuming that 2022 is, is neutral, is balanced. There's been some projections that 2022 fund balance could actually go up, given the sales tax performance, but this most recent month, it, it's flat if not down a bit. So compared to the month, the year prior. So if we increase the fund balance to 10 million, we have 2022 expenditures of $1,030,000 and $1 million reserved for the pay plan. That is an estimated remainder of approximately $6 million in the general fund reserve balance. On the ARPA side, we previously had conversations as part of our strategic planning that we had $7 million of ARPA funds that we allocated, half a million to vehicles and equipment, half a million to park master plan above and beyond the annual allocations out of sales tax, half a million to river renewal, which is already accounted for in, in that initial accounting that I, that we provided. Transfer to debt service reserve of a half a million, station alerting, alerting funding for the fire department at a half a million. Facility audit implementation and childcare, kind of an odd combination of the two, but just a, kind of a holding category of a million. Baseball improvements at 1.5 million and two categories of housing, one for infill, and then one for housing infrastructure in general. So those totaled at $7 million. Staff looked at that a little bit, but we don't have any recommendations of changes to those numbers necessarily. You certainly could at your discretion. So then we also looked at, okay, what would it take to, in terms of debt service on an annual basis? We looked at it in two ways. 13 years would be the remaining life of the, the sales tax that's in place today, expiring in 2036. And then 20 years, if we funded it and either had to fund it out of general fund, property tax, or hopefully, sales tax renewal when the time comes. And then we looked at it at a $5 million increment and a $10 million increment. So if you, if you zero in on 13 years, it's a half million or a million corresponding to 5 million or 10 million. If you carry it out to the 20 years, it, it's a little bit less than that. 367 and 735. So options that we identified were, as we discussed, you could, we could reduce the raise grant scope, not recommended by all those in the know, or seem to be knowledgeable about the raise program at this point. You could do a partial raise in the funding increase and scope decrease. While that may be personally appealing to me, I'm not so sure that our advisors aren't telling us that that's not strategic, that we ought to just plan for that, but not propose that as part of the communication back today. And then out of that 4.8 million funding increase, it's what we just reviewed. Sales tax, general fund, ARPA, Friends of the River pledge, debt financing. Could be a combination of those or looking for future opportunities of other funding, project cost savings, or additional grants. Is that the last slide? So that's kind of the conclusion. As much as my general instinct says to have you have an absolute plan and balanced number and show the math to the penny, we're, we're not at that point. We know, we know what we're being asked. The question is our level of comfort of indicating that we will fund the project at that, that full amount. And if you, as a governing body, want to say precisely how we're going to do that today as part of that decision, you certainly could do that. If it's a little bit more general, you could do that. Or if you say, tell them yes, and we'll figure it out later. We don't generally do that, but we could do that as well. And I'll stop there.
Well, I believe we can figure it out on the way. So I'm confident that staff can find a way through this myself. So I'd say that we take whatever staff recommends is the best option. I guess that's not reducing our scope and, and do what other things we can to, to make the best application that we can.
Right, yeah, if the goal is securing the raise grant, and it's significant, then, yeah, I think the collective recommendation is that we say that we'll find a way to fund it, knowing that there might be opportunities to save out in the future, but no guarantees. And there are, there are available sources between Friends of the River contribution and otherwise to, to fund that. Obviously, that's making this a priority, and it moves it to the front of the line.
George is like set aside for, that we've done for, for the ARPA grant for the childcare. Or, and I guess I've spoken to shifting a little bit out of streets before, and I think there's enough malability in the budget to get there.
Well, in part, that's why we ran the.
I'm not terribly pessimistic person, although just inflation scares me and the interest rates.
Well, you know, I've, I've noticed that, I think once people see water flowing and development starting, I'm hoping Friends of the River can attract even more private money. But other than the housing, this is the last jewel of our grand generational project that we have to complete. And it's the one that's going to be visible only when that water is flowing through. And I, yeah, I think we could, well, I think Carl, you said it the best, get it started and figure it out later. I mean, we will do it officially, more professionally than that, but, but there's options for shifting funds around. I mean, I think we're too close to let this drag out another two or three years before we get anything started.
And I think it's an important point that we, we show progress in this.
Carl, they're having a hard time picking you up on, on TV, if you can.
It's an important point that we need to show progress on the project. So we need to get something started sooner than later.
One of the reasons we ran those debt calculations was in anticipation that it, the approach may not be a one-time lump sum payment. It may be annually, we need to make adjustments to, to fund that.
You know, if, if you're going to build a seven-mile-long park, $700,000 debt financing for 20 years, if you were just setting out to pay by cash, I mean, that's not, I know it's not the only money we'd be spending, but it's for other projects. I don't think it's an inordinate worst-case scenario for us.
And just to be clear, how long is the, if we fully fund this, how long is the assumed trail? Is it five miles?
Five miles. And then we have the boardwalk that's included with YMCA, and, and then we have the other trail that we're assuming around the YMCA that's in the picture to date. So this would get us a lengthy, I think the intent is to get us a trail the entire distance with the components and pieces we're speaking about, that we're working already with the Friends on. And the boardwalk is an extension of that. So we're going to be real close to getting all the way through. And out at Lakewood, there's still some debate on how we would best do the trails out there to fit into that location, whether they're concrete or they're more natural. So I think we'd be in really good shape and have trails for the majority of the project, the five miles, with the other pieces included. So I think that's a plus.
That, that will become the playground for essential kids, at least for adults, playing kids.
So when we're talking about our shortfall right now, if we've ran through a lot of numbers, that does not include any cap program dollars or GI program dollars. Is that correct?
Well.
I mean, I'm. If, which number you're looking at.
Right.
And again, I, I kind of agree with, with Commissioner Ryan about moving forward. But again, I don't want to handcuff future commissions and, and, and the city based on, on the fact that we, we're, our shortfall's too significant.
Yeah, if you, yeah, keep on the.
I need to know which shortfall we're talking about, I guess.
Which, which one of these plans are.
Go to the increased raise without core. So trying to be conservative in terms of the assumptions, I think the second scenario on that slide, increased raise contribution without the core program, without any core programs, assumes that we're putting in $7.5 million for the river elements we are trying to get into the cap program, and we're not in the GI program. And we do commit to the 4.8 million. It does not assume the added funding that Friends of the River just told us about. So, and our calculated shortfall was 6.69 million.
Now, is that reducing the contingency also from 20 to 10?
No.
So that doesn't include that also? And then, I know this does not include the GI, but would we go after that GI program for funding? So it doesn't mean that that's going to be our shortfall. It means it is if we, at some point, we don't get some funding from the, from the Corps.
Correct.
And Mike, I'm looking for the right numbers of Jacob, but for the GI program, we talked of it being at $9 million. So we're kind of, the difference with the GI program of $9 million versus.
I think it's, it's hard because we just don't know enough about the core programs today. So what we think, based on everything that we know today, is that the shortfall is going to be somewhere between 5 and 10 million dollars. But it could be more than that. It could, it could be less. It's just because we don't know about the Corps and everything has shifted with the Corps dramatically in the last two weeks, we just, we don't have enough confidence to tell you that, to give you a number that's, that's really accurate.
The GI program, it doesn't have an upper limit, and it's a caution. I'm going to say it's 65, 35, because that's more conservative. Sometimes it's 75, 25, but there's no limit. And so they were proposing more of a, a more costly project originally under the GI program because they wanted to do some additional dredging and repairing areas. And they thought we could get more project proof, less money than we're spending in the cap program.
And I hadn't thought about, so I'm a little bit familiar with the raise grant because we won one in Hays when I was there. And I hadn't thought about what, what Rick said. So they basically allocate a pool of money for raise grant. And I, it's, I don't know how many millions of dollars right now, but it's more than it's ever been before. And they'll allocate this money out to programs, and depending on how those come out, so let's say a project comes a little bit less, they have money that's still in the pool, then you can go back and ask for that additional money. So there is. Then you can go back and ask for that additional money. So there is, there is a little bit of opportunity maybe for that to happen. I think the benefit of getting in on the front end of this raise grant, I mean, it, just now, they increased the amount of money in the raise grant. There's all kinds of other federal dollars out there, but we're kind of on the bleeding edge of that. I mean, um, the raise grant this year was different than it has been in the past. Generally, they, they put out a, a notice and they give you six or eight months to work on it. This year, you got two months. So even getting an application in with a project that was as far along the path as we are was a, is a pretty significant deal, I think, for the city of Salina, which is, I think, why it's paying off with the 20 million dollars.
So we believe that there, through this letter and through the comments of, of Senator Moran, that they're going to offer us 20 million. What happens if they come back after we've answered them and it's less than 20 million?
Yeah, I think at
I Okay, I'm just, I'm just
Yeah, at that point, we'd have to, I think, go through the same exercise and figure out
I'm not a pessimist either, but I just, you know, I
They can't expect us to do the same level of project if they reduce the funding out, you know, much more than where they're at. So at, at some point, they would come back and we would have to say, okay, whatever the dollar amount is, this is the reduced scope that we can get for that dollar amount and then, and figure it out from there.
If, if the raise money was received, do we then send a letter to the core saying, thank you very much for your interest in this project? We've decided to go another way. I'm assuming once we start cutting a channel, they're not going to reimburse us.
No, we'll, we'll continue to play both ends against the middle as long as we can. And, and they're supportive of that. The, the cap program acknowledged that there might be other sources. And the email that, that the raise folks sent us asked whether we had other federal funds from other programs. So I think there's an opportunity there. You're right. If, if we start doing work that is within the scope of one of those other programs, that would kind of be the point of no return as it relates for that particular expense, but we'll continue to pursue that as much as we can.
And quite a bit of the work that, that is involved in the raise grant is work that really would be better off to be done before the river's actually flowing in a, in a, you know, because we're doing lots of bridge repairs and culvers and that sort of thing. So we really don't want a whole lot of water going through that channel while we're doing those seven bridge projects. So it's really
Very good point. That's a very good point.
So Commissioner Hoppe, back to your question, with Friends of the River increase of 620 and a, a reduction, if you cut the contingency in half, that's 2.7 million. There's 3.32 million right there. And I, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mayor.
And, and again, we control the design of the facilities. We're designing for the maintenance facility and the boat ramps to we have some control of what that final cost of those items are.
So even though we wouldn't be reducing the, the overall scope, we could do things that would reduce the cost of that scope
In the design efforts.
In the design efforts. So what you're saying, and I guess following uh Jacob's comments, is right now, worst-case scenario, we think would be a $10 million shortfall, which if you were to fund it over a 13-year period, which we, we showed here would be a million, or if you went out to 20, it'd be 735.
And that's what the river renewal project got there.
Right.
Based on what we know today. That's, that's what we think.
And, and recognizing some of these are preliminary cost estimates, but
And, and I do worry a little bit about the 10% contingency. I mean, the federal government has the 35 to 50, and we know costs have gone up. Now, will those come down by the time we get to doing certain things? I don't know. But 10% contingency is not probably any too much.
It depends upon the quality of your original estimate, how much your
And how long ago did we do those estimates?
These we just did in April. In fact, that was what
Okay, so that is
Why we didn't get our application until April.
So it wasn't two, three years ago? It is for
No, we had older numbers for these features, but HDR added inflation and added additional dollars. When I look at these numbers compared back to
Out of curiosity, how much did those estimates go up from your original estimates to the ones in April?
Things are, some of them are different because we packaged things together to make it sound, I don't know how to describe it, to make it fit better into their program.
And there's certainly added elements that might not
But just as an indication of inflation, are you willing to ballpark?
Yeah, that's, that's my question, I guess.
The inflation from the 2019 to here, I think, was about 8 or 9%. And then they added another buffer of either 10% into that, then they put a contingency on the end. It's kind of like the cores.
Eight, nine, plus 10, plus 20.
It's where, wherever you sneak it in, whether you want to show it as one big number at the end, or if you want to squeeze a little in here and there.
So I'm, I'm reading between the lines that you feel there's, there's, I don't want to use the word fluff, but there's, there's
That's what HDR used.
Okay, well, yes, I could work for that. Okay, I didn't want you
That's what the, the, actually what the Department of Transportation might think, where we have a 5.4 million dollar contingency, that that might be a little larger than it should be and we're fluffing it up so that we can um get to our large projects. So we can, and part of what our goal here was to get 25 million.
To get as much as we could out of the core, right.
Out of that. So then we had to have enough project to get that. And we also knew that if we only put in 20%, or our share was 20%, that was not favorable. But our share of the project, we needed to be above 30% to, to get the nod. And so that's
Makes me, makes me feel a little better, I think.
There was a lot of work in how we worked through these numbers and trying to keep it as easy as I can, but
And I, and I'm kind of repeating ourselves, but staying in a different way, I guess. Right now, we're in an application process with very little dialogue back and forth and very little time. If we can get into the program, we can get the grant awarded, then I think we can start to have design conversations and scope conversations and
We have opportunity to plan ahead and know a little bit more about the, in six, eight months, hopefully, to know a little bit more about what the market's doing. We'll have numbers on a wastewater plant here before that's out and see what kind of pain that causes for us. But uh the numbers are out there and we're, we're tracking them in different projects, but they're still high.
How long is it going to take you to type up this letter this afternoon? Because you've got like about a half deadline.
I have a letter typed up with a blank in it to insert what it is you decide.
We're just supposed to say yes according to HDR and the, and the person from Moran's office.
We, kind of repeating what we, we submitted previously, but stressing the importance to the community and our commitment to the project. And it could go either way, depending on, on what you, as a governing body, decide. But yes, I'm mindful, I got to get it, got to get it out the door here in a couple of hours.
I guess my thought is, uh, people who I hear from, they just want to see water moving. It's in the park over the weekend and it's just embarrassing, disgusting. So I think we need to move this project, do something as, to get it moving as quick as we can. And as I see, like your boat ramp, the boat house, the plaza, that's going to come at the end of the project. Is that be right?
Depend, if we wait on the GI program, we might actually try to do some of those to show some progress in the meantime.
We'll, we'll probably do the bridges first and then Iron Avenue and the plaza will fit together because they are together. It works better to do them together than I, than I think to try to separate them as two separate projects.
But I still think the main thing is water. And you're not going to have a plaza and a boat dock without water and
Although it, it doesn't make sense to do the bridges before we have water flowing. I, I can see where that logic is coming. Plus, it might buy us time to get a little more money for the water. But uh, uh, and I think once you get the plazas started, there are enough people in town that want to see their name live in infamy that money will start coming up, it would work uh first. And, you know, private investment, there may be private boat docks built. I mean, entrepreneurs will throw a bound.
First of all, we'd just like to say that only 10% of these raise grants get funded from what we were told. So to get funded by this is a really incredible experience, just to let you know. And these projects, most of those projects, we have no funding for. Most of those bridges, like Midway, the Y, um, the Lakewood Bridge, there's many of, we didn't have trail dollars. We didn't have lighting dollars. This is like a gift from heaven, really. And so it's going to make the project so much better. And I totally believe, once we have construction going, that people can see things moving, they will uh be more accepting that the project is moving along and, and be more willing to wait for water. And so we think that any kind of construction project will help in the belief for the project. So this is about doubling what the sales tax dollars were giving. We've almost doubled it in this one grant request. So to me, it's such an important moment that you'll get to have a way better project than you would be without it. So we're just excited and hope that you will feel the excitement that what this could do for this project. Thank you.
Might add something. Mike, the other comment that I got talking to HDR is that the average grant award is 15 million. So we're already on the good side at 20.1, so they think we really had a favorable application. And Jacob has spoken of this all the way along, that we were just so far ahead of where anyone else could be to be able to pull this off. And I think with Friends' help with the sharing the cost for the work that HDR did was, you know, have to say thank you to that because that was a big help and made it a lot easier decision for us to move forward. So there's, there's been a good partnership and I can't think that, we can't continue and work with them. We try to keep them in tune and as we work through the project, we'll do the same and get their ideas and suggestions. And sure, everyone else getting some input on what we can build and how we build it, so it's a
Are these dollars available immediately or how is, is it, did we get it in one lump sum or is it
Um
Just out of
That's a good question. There, there will be a, a process that we have to go through. So there'll be an agreement that we have with the federal government on how this is all going to work. And there'll be additional design that has to be done. So it won't necessarily be one lump sum, but there'll be a schedule that comes out as we
Yeah, I didn't know if we had certain benchmarks we had to ma, to meet before we got our dollars or, or how they funded that, so.
Yeah, the only specificity that I know of is that 2026 timeframe.
Tell them, well, have our, our plan and have it all spent by 2031 is really the, the importance of their schedule and
We're, we're well ahead of that in terms of what we already have in hand.
I think they're in a hurry to
They want to spend the money.
They want to get the money out there.
Yeah.
I mean, they shortened the whole timeframe for everything just to, to do the grant application process. I think they want to get the money out.
We started it over a year ago that we wanted to do this grant application, but at that time, we determined we couldn't get all the work done we needed to. So we had laid the groundwork to be ready for this and to move quickly. And we didn't know we were going to have to move two months quickly, but, but we did. Kylie pulled it together. She's quite the gatherer of information.
What type of motion do you, are you looking for?
Well, whatever, wherever your consensus lands, if it is authorizing us to respond that we have the additional 4.8 million available, then with, the wording of that will acknowledge the Friends of the River's increased pledge. They, they've indicated they can get us a letter to that effect. I will then draft the letter on behalf of the city and provide some general confirmation that we have funds available and, and available proceeds to meet the 4.8 million additional obligation.
And that, that also means even if it's cost savings, as long as we keep the scope the same?
Yeah, the, the only thing they're really looking for from us today is confirmation that the 4.8 is available. We're committed to providing it. And if we have savings, we'll deal that, we'll deal with that. It's part of the project management and uh grant administration.
It's not like we have to spend it if we're able to just
Yeah, as long as we satisfy them in terms of what we're delivering, the way a project's scoped, then I think we could realize some savings.
Though Carl, if you're ready for a motion, I'd offer what Mike just said as a motion.
I didn't say that very well, but I
Well, we'd move that we would move forward uh with the confirming that we are in for the 4.8, whatever it may be.
I went ahead and put their email on the screen and I guess what you could say is directing staff to confirm that the city of Salina has additional sources of funding to deliver the full scope presented with an, with $20.1 million of raise award and additional $4.8 million of local funding.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I guess then we, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
We have a 5-0.
Thank you. We keep talking about generational projects and this feels like another one. Thank you, Mayor.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you for being available on such short notice. Thank you. Your work. Thank you.
My pleasure. All right. See you guys.
Thank you, Mayor.